And with that, you may adjourn. Roll call of members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Harren, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Kruebe at large.
Here.
Uh, if you have a copy of the agenda in front of you, we're gonna do something a little bit different. Uh, we have a couple of legal matters that we got to get through. Uh, so we will go into closed session just for a few minutes. Uh, I'll read this and then we'll come back out of closed session as quick as we can. Okay, I'm gonna amend the agenda first, uh, to do, thank, glad she's up here. Uh, anyway, to do that, we will approve the agenda but amend it, you said a couple of things need to add too, is that correct?
Right, we need to add item five B, closed session, number seven, legal counsel, and add ten B, ratify letter of support for police leadership in southwest Virginia training.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So made.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll s-
All right. Y'all ready to go this morning, I can tell.
We are.
All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. We approve the amendments from, uh, uh, the item five, approve the amendments from March the second, two thousand twenty-two. If you had a, uh, a moment to look at those, hope you have, do we have a motion to approve the amendments as provided to you?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Harren made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second. All fair and able to say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. One thing, if you would, if you would, if you have a cell phone, please, uh, idle it or turn it off or whatever, so they won't interfere with our meeting. Uh, now, we'll back in on what I said about this, uh, uh, closed session, be just a few minutes, we gotta do that, couple of legal matters to work on. So, uh, anyway, we have, uh, one item, is that correct, Mr. Taylor, one item, go into closed session, do we have a motion?
I'll get a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah.
Call a meeting back to order, uh, this certifier closed session. Uh, whereas the Scott County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date present to affirmative recorded vote and of course with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two, dice three, seven, one, two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Scott County Board of Supervisors off such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the Scott County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were, were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, we'll do by road call, uh, our clerk.
Mr. Jeter?
Yes.
Mr. Tipton?
Yes.
Mr. Heron?
Yes.
Mr. Bricky?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Ms. Hood?
Yes.
Ms. Creby?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, there's a couple of things we want to do before we do this. I do encourage you to come and speak. Uh, we'll go into citizens' pressure here in a minute, but, uh, the couple of things that we feel like is necessary at this point. And with that, I'm going to entertain a motion that we disband the equalization board effective today, April sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion to disband the equalization board?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second. All in favor, both say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, with that being said, uh, there will be a new equalization board appointed. We will start the process over. We will, uh, do our due diligence to get the word out to people. Uh, I do encourage you to come and speak, okay? There, there is some areas of concern with this equalization board. I'm not going into details about it. Now, you are here as concerned citizens of this county. I want you to come and speak. We'll go into citizens' pressure period, but I'm going to ask you, do you want to serve? This board is disbanded, the equalization board, the appointments have been, will be canceled that they have that's coming between now and the end of the month. So you're concerned about your taxes and so am I. This whole board is concerned. So with that, we'll go into citizens' expression period, uh, there's something else I need to do. One more thing we need, a vote, uh, to authorize the staff to establish and restart the process. Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Yes.
Ms. Cribby made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr., uh...
Tipton.
Is that your name?
I think.
All right. Second, all in favor, both say an aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. So with that, we will go into citizens' expression period, and I know you're here to speak. Some may be trying to come up and talk to me with your paperwork in hand. I encourage you to come if you would. Let wait, but I've got to do one more thing. Forgive me. I have a mistake in my reading, so I'm going to let that hang up. All right, citizens' expression period is upon the meeting, and anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, owner of what, or what organization you represent. The board may or may not, may or may not respond to anything you say, but we're going to take everything into account when making future decisions. Uh, please keep your comments concise and businesslike, and no one is signed up to speak. Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
Have not, okay, so we'll, this tells you how we do this. Uh, we have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Inaction will be considered after we close citizens' expression period. So we are in that, so if you want to speak, please come to the podium.
Thank you. Let me kind of get my motions under control, and I appreciate what you've done. I've done a lot of research and stuff, see that. And, uh, there was a lot of things that, that I thought was unfair about it. Uh, if, if you've got proof that you've been overcharged, that should be heard. If you've not got proof, you shouldn't get your taxes lowered just because, you know, my land not worth that. It's got to be a praise in a manner that you get out. It's only worth what you get out of it. So, uh, I want to thank you again for reconsidering and giving everybody opportunity. I got percentages and stuff that was unreal, the decision that was made to not hear people. Uh, they was like, I got to share this with, with everybody. There was three thousand and some appointments could have been had on the equalization board. There was only one, four hundred and thirty-seven recognized. I was one that tried to get through. It was busy, and I didn't think nothing about it. And then I waited a week or so, went back, and I visited golf course. I play a little golf occasionally, and I went up there to get me an appointment. And you don't shoot the messenger. A lot of people shoot the messenger, but the girl told me, she said, we're not giving any more appointments. I said, not giving them more appointments? No. I said, why not? She said, well, they closed it. And I said, is it full? She said, no, it's not full. It's just, uh, we're not taking any more appointments. So I didn't get mad at her, but I was getting mad at her because she was the messenger. So I, and it comes back to the board and the citizens y'all made. And I'm glad you rethought it and made a change, and I appreciate that. And all the legwork I done is not in vain because I got somebody's attention that what I was doing, and I was going to show percentages to people that was represented and the ones that not represented. And I know we got to have money to operate the county, and I understand that. And why can't we get a system that everybody's sharing that system? Go back twenty-four years. What is that, before assessments? And get somebody to figure out the percentage it takes every six years to operate this county. You can get that number, how much it cost in two thousand, two thousand six, whatever. And come up with, we're going to need thirteen percent increase if we're going to operate this county the next six years, or fourteen percent. Some of mine went up, probably went up fourteen percent, but I ain't a problem with that. Some went up thirty-eight percent, I got a problem with that. But if you'll pay ten percent, twelve percent across the board, and then everybody's sharing, not just a few, uh, if you're paying a five hundred, if you've got a five hundred thousand dollar home, and you're paying fourteen percent, you're paying a lot more than somebody's got a sixty thousand dollar home paying fourteen percent. So you're getting the people that can afford it also. Uh, so why can't you come up with a figure, uh, that's going to cost us next six year? Does anybody got an answer to that, why we couldn't do that? Is that a feasible way to look at it? If I was sitting there in one of y'all's positions, I would be looking at that and trying to figure out what it's going to cost us to operate the next six years. You're not going to get it exactly right, but you can get it close, okay? If you come up and you come up half a million dollars short, raise the tax levy. You know why I think it'd be legal or all right? Because everybody's sharing it. You're not getting a few, you're getting everybody. Uh, and that's, you know, uh, your county's run like a business, and, uh, it's got to be run like a business, and you got to get some of the money to operate it. If you don't, uh, we're going to go under sooner or later. So, uh, uh, I'm sure we got people up here that knows, that knows that business to, uh, uh, figure this out, how we can get by, and, uh, doesn't anybody share in what we've got to have to operate our county there? And, uh, one other thing before, uh, before I thank you again for doing what you did. Uh, is the county employees getting an increase? Y'all know that?
We'll respond after the, after the, uh...
Okay, okay. Well, the only thing I'm, you know, uh...
After, uh, here.
Okay, you, you know, the most important thing we got is our children. Uh, I don't know about the teachers. Uh, to me, they're very important. And our teachers and the parents get our kids ready for our life down the road. Uh, if that don't happen, then we're in for a bad ending. So if we don't kind of reward our teachers, uh, and they go into some other kind of fashion that they make more money, uh, if you lose all of your good teachers, uh, our kids are going to suffer. And that is a mistake, a bad mistake. So if there's any way that, uh, them people can be, hey, some of my best, best friends are county employees, and I love them all. And the way that, uh, inflation is right now, everybody's going to suffer. Uh, it's going to cost me and you and you and everybody else five thousand dollars more plus, literally, this year. If you haven't prepared for that rainy day, you're in trouble. Uh, a lot of us are probably prepared for that rainy day, but we've got a lot of elderly people in this county that owns land or pays taxes that's on a fixed income. I know that I've seen, I've read all this stuff, uh, there's a way they can be helped too, and that's great. I, I really, I really understand that. But, uh, I want to thank you again for what you've done and give us another opportunity to, uh, to meet and be heard. That don't mean we're going to be satisfied with what we hear, but, uh, sometimes satisfaction is being heard. So, uh, thank you again, I appreciate it.
Quick question, are you willing to serve on the new equalization board?
Uh, got to do this golf play.
I, I want to tell you something, I resent that. This board here volunteers?
Yes.
That's fine, go play your golf. Next speaker, please.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Adam. All right. My name is William Casper. I live at six eight nine Newland Hollow Road.
Tell me your name again.
William Casper.
Spell your last name. Okay, go ahead.
I live at six eighty-nine Newland Hollow Road, Webber City, Virginia. Yeah, the reason I was here was regarding to property taxes, and, um, I'm just going to go over what happened as far as me receiving my letter. I received the letter for my property taxes saying that my taxes were going to go up one hundred and six percent. Now, the land that they want to go up on is in the flood zone. So when I received the letter, I called to find out how they came up with this, and they basically said they don't know, they couldn't give me any information that they would get back in touch with me. They never got back in touch with me. Called back a couple of weeks later, they said they knew nothing about that, and they never got back in touch with me again. Then when they called back, all the phone lines were busy. So, um, then after, when I finally got through, they had it automated for like two weeks, they said they wouldn't receive phone calls. When I finally got through, they said they, it was too late, I had to come to this meeting. Now, I understand that you're going to give us another chance to find out about this, but as far as the hundred and six percent tax increase, I'm from, I relocated from New York, and our top property taxes would get increased by four percent, two percent, you know, every couple of years.
Is that yearly?
Yeah, well, yearly or every couple of years, but they would go up in minimal amounts. So a hundred and six percent, I'm not sure how they came up with this, but how much is that? Nobody could give me any answers to how they came up with a hundred and six percent, you know, why they came up with that. My property being in the flood zone is also part of the reason why my taxes were low. My property's flooded five, six times in the last three years. So I just wanted answers to how they came up with such a number, and really, what is that amount? And nobody could tell me that. So that's why I was, came to this meeting to find out.
Okay. Are you a county resident?
Yes.
Are you willing to serve on the new equalization board?
I don't know what that means, what that tells. I don't say no, but I don't, you're going to have to give me more information.
All right, all right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on, just come on the podium, real quick. Come on, just come on the podium, real quick.
My name's Cindy Clark, and I live at four fifty-seven Newland Hollow Road.
Cindy Clark?
Yes. And, uh, I have the same problem. I have flood plain zone, and they went up on my lot three, which is a hundred percent. Well over, actually, I don't even have a piece of paper showing, all I've got is lot one and two. And basically, I've got the same argument against. And if you want me to, I sure will.
Okay, we'll, we'll take your information, and that'll be advertised. The folks, we had a hard, 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 hard time getting people to serve on that board.
I don't care, I mean, I will. My father and my grandfather served for this county, I'll do it too.
And you, and, but once we appoint you, you're, you're appointed by the, a judge, so it's, it's a big deal to get this. So I hope you understand that we, we're gonna need a new board, so...
I would take it, I mean, I would be...
We'll get your information, thank you. Alright. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Philip Clay, I live at six twenty-two Jefferson Street in Coburn. I resemble a lot of those remarks you just heard. Uh, I never heard two hundred percent, but, uh, that's what some of my property, I own a hundred acres a year well on Cox Chapel Road, and I went through the same ordeal with these people trying to get appointments. And when I finally did get a return call that said that, you know, they're taking appointments, when I called, I'm sorry, uh, we're not taking any more appointments. So I came here today to try to get an appointment with the equalization board. So I understand, if I'm clear, did I understand that all this stuff that we've gotten so far will be looked at again? Is that correct? Yes. Well, that's the only reason I came today was to beg for an appointment, just to let somebody look at what's happened on my property. And, um, I don't think I would be eligible to serve on your equalization...
You gotta be a Scott County resident.
But, uh...
Thank you for offering anyway.
I hope you get some people that, uh...
We hope so, too.
That can really understand, you know, fairness, and, and I think that's all anybody wants.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. And thank you again for disbanding the, whatever you had before, 'cause it didn't seem like it was working.
We have some areas of concern, I was asking, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Anyone else, oh, come on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Lawrence Lawrence, I own a property on five forty-four Park Street.
What's your last name again?
Lawrence, L.A.R.T. I live in Sullivan County. And I think the price is too high for the, the taxes too high for the house. I don't think the house is worth what you're praising for. But by the way, take another look at it and see what you think. It needs a lot of work, and it's my dad's old house, and I bought it with him years ago. I paid to have the yard mowed, and he said, "Keep the county beautiful." I trimmed some stuff on the state and couldn't get it picked up, piled it up on the road. Told him a year ago it needed to be picked up, they said it'd do work, or it didn't. Come back later and wipe it down, or it didn't do it. Spoke to the town manager, he said, "'Cause it was on the state, couldn't pick it up." So it's a problem there. I called the police one time, there's stuff being sold out, house, they never showed up, never come around, stuff still got sold. Never done nothing. Wonder what's my taxes get for? So look at that house, give it a please.
Thank you. You live at Scott County, correct?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Alright. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ready to shut you down. Good morning.
Uh, Wallace Ford, I live in Hawthorne Terrace, Weber City, Virginia. I got up here, I want to thank Roger. Roger and I are close friends, we've been friends since we was in high school. Our children growed up together. Just been a very good friend. Something caused you all to change your mind. Word of mouth fits around. Something, something caused you all to change your mind. Uh, I know Roger did a lot of work, he did a lot of research. Probably some things that you all should've done. I'm not here to criticize the board, uh, anybody that runs, when they come to my house, when they're running for any kind of office, I don't ask them their party or whatever, I thank, I wanna thank you for being willing to serve this county. Else it's a thankless job. I don't know why that you, well, the reason I guess I come up here is why you're appointing another equalization board. A lot of people that I, I knew some of them, I didn't know them all, but they're good people. I, I don't want, I don't want people leaving here today thinking that they was something bad wrong with that first equalization board. Cause it, it wasn't. I don't know why you all are changing, that's your all's business. But I do thank you for recognizing, uh, some problems. And like Roger said, you've come out here and you're willing to, to make some changes. I thank you for, uh, listening to me and let me express my feelings. But again, I want to thank all of you for serving.
Thank you. Are you, would you be interested in serving on the equalization board?
Well, I'm gonna tell you, back when I was a young man, they used to get me for jury duty every two years. I don't know how many times I served on the jury.
You done a good job.
I even was, uh, I even had to go to Big Stone and, and serve on that grand, uh, whatever that jury is up our federal, whatever. Evidently, I got too old to serve on the jury, and they quit calling. I think we need young people, we need some young people to step up in this county. That's older people, you know, my dad served on the equalization board, I remember when he served on it. And, uh, uh, he, he was thankful he got to see, he explained a lot of, a lot of things to me. He was thankful he got to see sort of how the taxes were laid on different sections of this county. And, uh, of course, at that time, I was living where I'm living now. And he said, "Son, your, your taxes is, is pretty high compared to people that owns a hundred acre farm and got nice houses and stuff." And I said, "Well, you know, they were, they were unreasonable, I had no problem." This time, my, my taxes went up close to fifty percent. And, uh, I felt, I felt that was unfair, but, uh, you know, over the years, it's went up ten percent, this and this, and this and that. And I never had said anything, but this is the first year I think most people, and they're here today, uh, because their taxes was, uh, unreasonable. And that's why they're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I'm not willing to serve, I'm too old.
I, I think you done good, I mean, you do, you do well, but that's your...
Can I say one more thing, Danny, before I leave? I'm one of the people in the county, and I'm gonna try to help. Get somebody that knows a little bit about land, and knows what the value of land is and how it should be done. I'll make some phone calls, and I'll try to get somebody that is qualified to do it. And who should they get in touch with if I can get somebody to do that?
Call the county offices here, that...
Just, just call the office and the name, whatever. But I'm, I'm willing to do that, and I'll, uh, I'll try my best to get some people that, uh, that I think would be qualified to do that. So if, if I have to, I'll kinda give them some information that I went back on and I found that wasn't fair. And I just, just one little thing here that, that I wanna recommend is if people don't have the proof, it shouldn't be lowered, it shouldn't be lowered, I made that comment earlier. But just like me, they've got me like thirty acres of rough pasture. Do you farmers know what rough pasture is? That's pasture that I have to hire a helicopter every three years to spray it. That is rough pasture. So they charged me twenty-two hundred dollars an acre for rough pasture. You know what the guidelines were set to be charged? Y'all didn't do it, but somebody did. Rough pasture, wooded pasture, rocky pasture, and all that. Mine is really rough, rocky pasture. If you live on Thorny Creek, you may know where Thorny Creek is? They didn't get that name just because it, uh, it's a creek there. It is rocky and rough, some of my places. It could be charged a thousand dollars an acre for rough pasture, but I'm paying twenty-two hundred dollars an acre for rough pasture. And I got the proof that it is rough, and if I got to see the equalization board, uh, that person should recognize that. That's a legitimate complaint that I've been overcharged. That could be corrected, but if I just went and said, "Hey, it's too high, I ain't paying this and all this," that's a different story. If you don't have the proof, you don't get, you don't get a discount. That's the way I look at it, and the, the people that I would recruit, they would know a little bit about that, and I'll try to get some. How many do we need?
Seven.
Seven, thank you.
They gotta have some real estate experience, they got, there's some issues with a couple of them, we have to have, it can't be just, uh, but some of them just citizens, the quality's not...
We need six and two alternates.
Six and two alternates, okay.
Two what?
Six and two alternates.
Six and two, okay.
And they date home.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll, uh...
I mean, I've known Roger all my life, he was great to have me.
You was starting with Lloyd when I was, uh...
Yeah, but I remember you.
Old enough with you.
I remember you, I remember you getting played by somebody while we was living, so...
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I've known you since you was little, and, hey...
We go back a ways.
Hey, I know where you live.
Yeah.
Hey, I know where one of y'all live now, 'cause I went to, to check it out. And to see if everything was equal. And, uh, Darrell, uh, Mr. Tipton, all your, I went, I know where all of you live now, everyone of them, so...
Appreciate it, should've stopped in.
Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, uh, I thank you again, and I thank you for the decision you made, and I appreciate it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I think her, yours, her.
Well, I appreciate your work, your volunteerism. I'm Lois Quillen, I'm nine and fourteen, Weber City, Virginia, on private property in Scott County. I think the problem with, uh, maybe you didn't have enough people who wanted to be heard by the equalization board was because a lot of folks did not know. So when you make your decision and you get your board together, please make it visible in Kingsport Times News, the county papers, Scott County Virginia Star, uh, WC, what, you know, the local TV stations, so that we know who to call, and maybe have several folks to answer the phones so that we can get appointments. I for sure am looking forward to, uh, an appointment with the, uh, board, the, the new board that you established. And again, I appreciate your work.
Would you want to serve?
I cannot serve, I have a business to run, sir.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Her.
My name is Shelby Minden Hall.
Say your last name again.
Minden Hall.
Minden Hall, okay.
My assessment about that, I have about an acre of flat land and sixty-four acres of hillside that a rabbit can't get through. And I don't know why it does. My barn is, the seal's a lot of death in it, 'cause I don't have anybody to... You can't hurt anybody anymore, they're charged for that. And when you're on a fixed income, you have to do the best you can. And I'm not doing anything to the house since my husband's been gone. I think it's time that mine's lowered.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Got a problem, David.
Uh, we get the...
We need power charger. Y'all talk indifferently, but, uh, you all have everything to do with health, right?
Well, not really, but we can listen to you.
I've got a house, man. Mark's a noble. I went seeing, uh, Hillmore Dollar Commitment, he said, "Boy, you gotta go to the health department to get a permit to build back." I was gonna build back a twenty-four to thirty-two stick wall and open bottom, and, uh, maybe, I'm thinking about putting my apartment on top. Health department said that I had to... Well, first of all, if you get a permit to put in a, uh, septic system, they give a map for two years, that's what she told me. I don't, I don't know what that's right, that's what that lady told me. And, uh, mine's been building a long time, but it works, and it's a three-bedroom house. And she told me, "I want you to give me a permit." I had to dig up my septic system, distribution box, to see that it went with the place that the house burned. And you know what happens if you dig up your distribution box, just like the way I did it? Well, if you wanna do that, well, any of y'all wanna do that? I think that's a bad situation. I don't know who's, uh, over that, but I would like to know. If I can, if I can get a permit, I'll build back up. I don't wanna collect heat taxes, not a lot, but...
We'll discuss, we'll come out, we'll discuss, I don't know, maybe we, we'll see. When it come out, the, uh, says expression period, we'll discuss.
I appreciate all the effort again, I'm gonna build back a little something if I can, uh, in our place, if I can get it.
Where, where do you live at, where is the...
Lake Huron Highway.
We'll discuss here in a few minutes, don't leave.
Okay, I appreciate it. Nothing, my house went up fifty-five thousand dollars, and they did lower it. But I don't know what that lady just, uh, she's old people. If we're, if, if we're bidding at one of fifty-five thousand dollars, and they're just on social security, they, they cut my social security two dollars this year, so we can either spend on that.
Alright.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. Won't take me but just a minute. My name's Scott Pleak, and I live at one eight one Copper in Dixie. Did I just hear that you had dissolved the previous board, and you're gonna appoint another board?
That is correct.
And I've got an original decision from the first board, that that's not gonna be honored?
No. Everything's been thrown out, starting over.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Thank you. Would you be willing to serve on the new equalization board?
No.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Simon Barr.
Say your last name.
Barr, B.A.R.R. I live, uh, Upper County, George, uh, Sullivan County. And I have a problem with, uh, well, I, I was still having fun with the board before. However, if my appointment never got made, I guess my phone call got through, dropped through the cracks or something. But I have a problem with the way they're assessing it. I think my property, it's back off of the road probably half a mile, three-quarter of a mile. I got a logging trail road to get into part of the way. Part of the way, I've come across a neighbor, they live in Tennessee, and I come to their, cross their Tennessee land into their Virginia land to get to mine. And, uh, I guess with a helicopter or something, that could make it look really good. But, uh, I had the same problem three years ago. I went in front of the board, and they brought it back down, you know, something reasonable. They got it two hundred percent again this time. And I complained that, that they didn't go in and do a personal assessment, they couldn't have it come back down with that kind of an assessment. Two hundred percent, I just, and my, I don't have any water on it, there's no water. There's no water. There's no electricity. And I have to keep up the road, you know. And my cousin, her name is, I'll go represent her today also, because her sister died yesterday. Her name is Pauline Jones, and she's ninety-five. And hers was same, I think it was similar to George mine, mine and hers were. I know, I think it was purchased by my grandfather in, uh, nineteen oh four or something, because it's been in the family over a hundred years, my portion and her portion. They raised them both the same. Hers is a little bit further. She has to over mine to get to hers. I, I, I have a problem with the, but I have to make an appointment to come to go in front of the board. Is that the way?
Yes, there'll be some new appointment daystone out there, but...
Where do I make that?
Well, we'll let you know. We're right now in the planning stage to get through this, but we'll, you'll, you'll be, you'll find out.
We'll let you know by mail?
We're not sure yet, but, uh, it'll, you know, the word will be gotten to you some way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
We start knocking on the door of eighty, it's a little rough. David Hensley, I live ten-fifty Shoal Lane. That's, uh, not too far out of Mendoa. Appreciate y'all serving. Appreciate what you done on the equalization board too, by the way. I'm not gonna go ahead, I'll, I'll give me some picture proof and stuff when I go back the next time. What I wanna know is, is there a chance, like, this young lady to come up here with the cane on a fixed end, kind of, is there any way that you can maybe work something with things like, of course, I'm on fixed end, I've got just a little bit more than maybe she did. But, uh, you know, some of those people really need relief. I mean, you start thinking about it, they're trying to live on maybe five, six hundred dollars a month.
Let me, let me, Debbie, would you address that? I know the, the, if you would come, this, she's our commissioner of revenue, she, let's go ahead and everybody can hear what she says about that.
Okay. We did have a program in the county. It's a two-hundred dollar discount. You have to be either over sixty-five or on permanent social security disability. Total income cannot be more than thirty-five thousand per year, and your total assets cannot be more than ninety-five thousand. That does not include your home. That would be any other real estate, you know, retirement accounts.
So that, that will help then?
That, and we did have a lot of people that get that discount, but if you notice someone that might get it, that's, you know, not getting it, please have them call my office or come in, and we'll be glad to fill them out an application.
Yeah, I know I do get a discount on my house and acre of land where I'm a hundred percent service connected this age.
And thank you for your service too, by the way.
Yeah. Well, you're in half of Vietnam. It was a lot of fun.
Thank you.
One other concern, I think, maybe, I don't know if y'all have anything to, but this public water. I've collected signatures up there where I live, I think, three times, and it's got within about two miles of my place. Uh, one of the previous board members said, Edgar, where it went long, it went by his house, I won't call his name. That kinda irritated me, but anyway, uh, did they not get another grant to put some more in? I know my spring, I got the spring water. It gets, when it comes to these hard rains, it's surface water. Dairy farm close to me, I know years ago, said that they had it tested, had some cold form in it. I think we've got immune to it, to that part, but...
Our PSA director's gonna be here a little later to do a presentation. You're welcome to stay, listen to it, and you can, if you want, you're welcome to stay at his presentation and see where he shook out at.
I tried to choke the old, uh, Dishman out, Mike Dishman, but I couldn't do anything with him.
Okay. He'll be here to do a presentation, so you're welcome to stay, listen to his presentation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for giving your service.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Well, I've got to thank my wife too. She called, called, finally got us an appointment that the equalization board didn't find about out about this.
All right.
My name is Jimmy Edwards, and I live on Danielville Road, and I promised my wife I wouldn't come up here this morning. Only I've got to say, I noticed every quick, and y'all asked us, people willing to serve on the equalization board. If my pastor asks me to preach Sunday, I might be willing, but I ain't qualified. And I don't think there's that many qualified people. I've been in this county too, sir. I know what one place is worth in this county, and that's mine. And the reason I know what it's worth is how much I'd be willing to pay for it. How much I'd be willing to take for it. And that's it. And I don't, how you come up with, how do you know what somebody's place is worth always? I just, I don't understand.
You, listen, you'd be an ideal because you don't know. You know, I, I, I was a job one time, I had no knowledge of railroad, but they wanted to hire me, and they said, we want, we'll train you, we'll tell you what we... So you'd be a perfect candidate because you're, you're open-minded enough to, to learn and listen, so...
Well, they might tell you, I've worked for forty years, and they did do a very good job, right?
But we'd love to have you think about it, and if you're willing to serve, so...
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm good. Anyone? Anyone? Okay, the electrical permit you need?
They won't give me electrical.
Okay. All right, we're gonna come out, assess expression period, I'll ask a minute, anyone wishing to speak? You know, it's kinda, when we throw it out there, do you want to serve? And folks, the people on this board here, we could pay, but it only hit us not pay if it's a citizen. And I have a concern, and I wish the others to stay. I've talked to some of these, and they're not willing to serve again. They're tired of it, they're sick of it. You know, when you get phone calls, and that, that's a part of it, I'll be honest, it's my third term. It gets hard. I told the, the staff here, we, we, we come and go. These people, it's their livelihood. Whenever he said, we don't do the research, or we don't know what we're doing, we've got people here that most certainly do know what they're doing. You know, and so, and I, 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 again, let it go, but it concerns me when we have good people, they're on this board here, very fine people, didn't know most of them until I got elected. And not to say, not to say, I'm done. I'm, I'm not gonna go through this anymore. My wife, she, she told me, she said, listen, you know, I'm tired of seeing you, I've been able to sleep, I'm in four-state leukaemia, I'm starting chemo next week again. It's hard to do this. I, I enjoy doing, I want to make this county better. Darrell Jeter, why are you serving this county?
Dignity, I guess.
Marshall Tipton, why are you serving this county?
I think, I share the same thoughts that you do, like, like yourself. I mean, I've had, uh, chemotherapy, I've had, uh...
He had AML, the worst kind of leukemia, and served sometime on TV from Vanderbilt.
Yeah. Praise God I'm here, but I just wanna help the citizens.
Jeremy Herron, why are you serving on this board?
To be the voice of the people, help the people.
You got, is any personal gain?
None. My taxes went up a hundred percent.
Mine went up forty percent the last time, thirty-one percent this time. I didn't go up there and say nothing. If you got them lowered a bunch in two thousand sixteen, you probably saw an increase because you got lowered a bunch in two thousand sixteen. That, that, uh, assessment was not a very good assessment, and you probably got a twelve year assessment is what you probably got. Mike Ricky, why are you serving this, on the board of supervisors?
I feel like I'd rather wear out than rest out. Tomorrow I will set for seven or eight hours getting an IV YAC.
This time last year, he could breathe and that was all. Couldn't walk. Could not walk. Samuel, why are you serving this board?
I want to help the people in the county, and I, everything that I do, I take into consideration every resident of this county. If you call me, I will act. I might not be able to get you what you want, but I will do something for you. And anybody who has called me knows that.
Ms. Krevin, why are you serving this board?
I have a servant heart, and I know that. And I love, more than anything, thinking that we, as a board, can help the ci, the citizens do something, you know, in some way, shape, or form, whether it's getting water to the folks on Cliff Mountain. I mean, that, that touched my heart, you know, knowing that we were able to help them get water, you know. It wasn't anything that was quick or anything, but, you know, and seeing, you know, progress and, you know, trying to make sure that this county, and I've got a niece and a nephew who I want to see have opportunity here in Scott County, and I want them to be able to, you know, enjoy what I've, what I am enjoying now. I mean, I live on a farm, so, I mean, I'm enjoying that part of it, and that, those two children, thirteen and a five-year-old, are the reason why I do what I do. I mean, is to hopefully help make it better for them. That's why. I don't have any kids. I have dogs, so...
You're getting married next month, I, you know, so, anyway.
Yes, I am getting married next month.
I want y'all to hear, and I'm people, maybe, you know, would watch this, and we're on the YouTube channel too, to say why we're here. And nobody here is by personal gain. We gain nothing. I grew up in a family of eleven and done gambling in poverty like you would not believe. I've been very blessed in this county. Very blessed to live here and have what we have here. We have people moving here. They want part of what you've got, they want to live here to get away. One guy was the top cop of the Capitol Police in Richmond. He said, I'm coming to Scott County. Get away from defund the police, getting away from what we're getting away from. A sergeant from Charlotte coming here, get out of Charlotte, he's got a job at Valley Health, he's, he's come somewhere in Fort Blackmore. They want, they're wanting to come here. You know, I hate taxes. I'm a conservative, I'm a Republican, I believe that we should stay within the confines as, as much as we can. We've cut positions here, the tri-scan attend, we've done everything we can, all the low hanging proved, we've done everything we can. This year, this year, the increase to the school system, one point five million dollars. When I got elected, we gave them four point eight. It'll be seven point five this year. Where does it come from? It comes from you all. So I'm not here to beat you, I am so glad that you came and spoke. I encourage people to come and speak. Our treasurer's here, Missy, we've gone back and forth. I love Missy, I think, I think she's a wonderful person. Don't take it personal, you know. We're here, we're elected, we do the best we can. We do the absolute best that we can. It gets hard. It gets very hard. And so it's not one here, it's not about personal gain. And some of the tax that I've seen Mrs. Hood go through because of decisions that she's made here. And so I know I say too much, I get told all the time, shut your mouth, but you all need to know what it's like to see it. I encourage you to run for the board of supervisors, what I encourage you to do. So there may be some open seats here, it sounds like there will be a call, they said, I've had all I want of this. I've had so many people come to me and say, please stay, because we like what you're doing, we know it's hard, we don't want you to leave. Some say, get rid of us. So anyway, that's my gist here. Mr. Gardner, on your permit, is there anything soundless we can do to help him that you know of?
Nothing I know of. Somebody higher up than that, maybe.
I don't know if anything we can do to help you with that. It's getting harder and harder to get, you know, sewer permits and stuff, the electrical permit shouldn't be that hard. Uh, it is getting harder and harder. I wish we, something we could say and could do. Do you have any ideal, Marshall? I mean...
I guess we talked to the permit guy back here.
Well, they have guidelines to go by, and we can't, and we can't, uh, do anything about that, and I'm sure they follow the guidelines.
I'll talk with him.
Can I say something?
Yes.
My father-in-law's house just burned down about a month ago, and he went through, of course, he lives in Russell County, but they have, uh, he had to have somebody come out and look at his septic tank to make, and it, it was old, it'd been there for a long time. But on the, uh, form that he filled out, it had a place to check. It said, um, basically, if you can't uncover it, it's a hardship to uncover it. You might ask them about that, uh, if there's a har, a hardship clause or whatever in the paperwork where it would damage maybe your... But now his, his, we only had to uncover the very top, but his was right on top of the ground, it wasn't hard to un, un, uncover, I done it with a shovel. But, uh, but that, that, that may be something you wanna ask them, or however we do that, but, uh, a hard, it, it, it would be a hardship for you to uncover that septic tank.
That's what I do.
Right. Yeah. I, I, I don't, I don't know how the law is on that, but, uh, of course, it's up to the health department, I guess. But that, 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 that may be something you ask them, you know, that may be a thing there. That's just something that I saw, I just happened to see that on the form when, when he filled it out and have his inspected in Russell County.
Uh, I'm gonna look at you guys. Do y'all ever invite Terry Hill or, or Griff to meet?
They have been here, at times, they're so busy, uh, and Griff lives so far away, like a four-hour drive, and, uh, which Terry, he's now the majority leader, and they were back in session this week, and so they're, you know... But if we question them, come, they probably would, they could work it out where they could come here maybe sometime or other.
You know, twelve a year, I know they can make four. I know they can make four. They need to address situations like this, well, that's, that's bad. Now, you would say that the person on this board is going to want them to take back all the things that are septic tank that they've already got in.
It worked for the old house, it should work for the new house. It worked for the old house, it should work for the new house.
Well, I owed y'all a permit now and another one, but she told me two years, all they kept in mind.
Anyway, we'll see, and I, I hate you going through that, I really do, that's kind of detrimental. It's where you live.
They gotta get a service, I don't have the lot to do it, I don't like to do that.
Well, we'll invite you to do that, but if we can, whatever we can do, we'll, we'll do it. Thank you for coming, sir. Anything else we need to address? I said more shit than I usually do. All right. With that being said, we'll go, we got public hearing to do. We're gonna take about a five-minute break. We're going to take about a five-minute break.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance to provide for precincts to establish boundary lines of precincts, to name each precinct, and to establish a polling place for each precinct to reflect changes in population after the 2020 census and a revision of the precinct and election district boundaries. So with that, we will open the meeting of the public hearing for any comments. No one wishing to speak will come out of the public hearing and comment from you all, or we can entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Can we just look at that quickly? Do you have it on there?
It's on the table.
I can discuss with you afterwards, because I know District 2 is affected by it.
I can go through it real quick if you'd like.
Okay.
Again, just as a brief overview of everything, what is redistricting, what we're doing for those folks that don't know. Every 10 years, of course, the year after the census, then you go through a redistricting process in order to make sure that you have each district basically with the same number of people represented for the supervisors in order to keep the balance of power. And so the way they do that, of course, is redoing the boundary lines on each one of those, and of course, that's what the public hearing is here for today. I won't take a lot of time to go through a bunch of this, other than to say again, one of the reasons it should have been done last year, but based on the COVID numbers and the census being unable to complete their process, we didn't get those numbers until earlier this year, because the census wasn't completed until 2021. And so with all of that information, once we did get it, then of course, you guys had appointed a board to go through that, a team, in order to look at all of those different things, and Wisco was very instrumental in putting that together, they could get those numbers, and they crunched all of that, and they came up with three different scenarios for the board to look at. And so based on that, the advisory board, they did that, and they came up with the best selection and consideration would be the scenario two, which of course is here on the map. Got a small version of it on here as well, it'd be hard to see, but it's there for your consideration. Of course, what they try to do is they try to be very, what is at least disruptive, you know, when they move those lines and make those things to try to make it more, as less disruptive for everybody, for those folks that are involved in moving from one precinct to another. Again, that's the PDF version of the map that I have, again, it's probably small and hard to see, but again, I'll go over it real briefly. There were four different areas that was affected. The first one, of course, is along south of Sunbright Road and north of Horton Summit Road, which is in the District 5, District 6 area, and those folks that are currently in 5, they'll be moving into District 6. Again, I don't have those figures in front of me, but it seems like it was about 15 to 20 people there. The second area was along Mineral Hill Lane, north of Big Moss and Creek, and west of the existing old Magisterial District line between Esteville and Johnson Magisterial Districts. Those folks would be going from District 4 to District 3. That's an area, as you're going up 71, in that general area, and so there was about 15 folks maybe that got moved there. The third area is along Filter Plant Road, around Big Moss and Creek, down by the sports complex, that general area right there is where that area is. You'll see that again, both in the notices and the written descriptions, that's for the public hearing today, along with the map, whenever you look at that. Those folks, they'll be going from District 1 into District 2, and so that was, there were several folks there, it seems like maybe 30 folks there, 30 or 40. And then, sorry, the last area, of course, is along Long Ridge Road, which is along 23, going towards the state line, beyond the left-hand side, as you're going towards, as you're going southbound towards Kingsport there. And it's along Newland Hollow Road and along through there, and so there were several folks that were affected in that general area, that probably affected the most.
Closest to the highway, closer to 23?
That's correct.
Closest.
Yeah, if you follow Long Ridge Road around through there, those folks were in District 1.
Well, some of them were, some of them were not.
Well, it depends on which side of the road you were on.
Exactly.
So, you know, we use the, unfortunately, we use a lot of roads and streets as the boundary lines, and so it's not uncommon for folks on one side of the street to vote in one precinct and some vote in another, or even district-wise, you know, from one district to another.
So two probably picked up on the, or even on the side of the road closest to the 2300.
You are correct. So overall, there was about less than 200, just under 200 folks, that was going to be affected by the four changes that's proposed that the team selected, which was very small in number compared to, you know, if you just take a big old chunk out of one. But again, in order to keep all of the districts balanced and even, you know, then we'd have to try to move those folks around, and again, the scenarios that the folks looked at and with Lino Wisco's help, you know, they kind of came up with something that was workable and doable, that was very least disruptive for all involved.
Were they individually notified?
They are, yes ma'am. And what we'll do is, if, once you make a decision as to how to proceed, then what will happen is that the ordinances will go before the Attorney General. If they do not see any problems with that, then of course, then they would get their stamp of approval on that. Once we're notified of that, then we're required by code to notify each individual person. They'll get a letter along with a new registration notice, they'll have their new district on it.
Only allows us that many voters, 15,884, I'm surprised it's that many.
And actually, it's, unfortunately, it's went down the last few years, so we used to, it was over 16,000, so it's gone, a few years, last few years.
All right.
Again, you're welcome to take a look at that, but again, you have the written descriptions, of course, are in the ordinances for the public hearing, so be able to take those looks and make your decision. Again, I want to say a big thanks to those folks that served on that, that you guys had appointed to serve on that floor for us, that was very helpful in order to look at that. Again, Lino Wisco, particularly Steve out there, has just done a great job, just overwhelmingly went out of his way to help us, and of course, he does that for all four localities that he represents, if they call on him, so they really do a good job out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, I want you to, I mean, I know during the, when the election years come around, then stick my head in and say howdy, whatever, y'all are busy people.
Well, you know, Virginia's one of the very fortunate states that we get to have an election every year, you know, some folks don't do that. We, of course, in Virginia, do have an election every November.
They spread the misery out over four years.
That's right.
We do a good job, and we thank you for your service at county. All right, anyone else who wants to speak here, if we entertain a motion to approve this ordinance? So, Mr. Charles. All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Deuter second, any discussion? All fair and able to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item A is a public hearing on an ordinance to provide for the apportionment of the members of the county more supervisors to establish boundary lines of the election districts, and to name each election district to reflect changes in population after the 2020 census and a revision of precinct and election district boundaries. So with that, we go into the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak? Not will come out of the public hearing, any discussion here before we vote? Entertain a motion?
Let's go over there.
Mr. Ricky made a motion, Mr. Deuter second. Any discussion, not, all fair and able to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the depot line abandonment, Route 757, from 0.85 miles south of US 58, US 421, to 58 hundredths of a mile south of US 23, US 421, distance of .27 miles. That been in your district, Ms. Selma, do we?
Yeah, we have Mr. Wade here, Mr. Wade, would you come up to the panel?
Name's John Wade, 746 Dunfield Depot Line, and I appreciate you guys bringing this before the board. I've just talked to Ms. Hoods back there a while ago, and we discussed some things about this, and I had some questions about, well, let me tell you why we wanted to do it to begin with. We own all the land, it's a dead end road, half mile long. We own all the land from the point where we were wanting to have it abandoned to the end of it, which is, I think you said how much it was, but really, it's about 200 yards probably, but, or 250, but one of the main concerns that we had, we have five grandchildren that live there, and grandkids likes to get out in the road for some reason, you know, to play. And also, when we first built there, our residence, we had a lot of people, you can see where the road dead ends there, they would come out there and turn around, they'd park there, you know. I guess different things going on, but through the years, you know, we've done work out through there, and they would like to say we own all the land. Couple of years ago, we purchased all the mountain land around it, so that's allowed us to own all that land. But they would come out there and park and everything, but now it's not that bad. And we were going to see if you guys would abandon it and just let us take it over, but I talked to my wife this morning, I've sort of had a little change of heart. I think it would probably be better in our interest in the long run to just leave it as it is, for several different reasons. One, the grandkids, like we were talking, would be getting older, and you've got mailboxes that would have to be moved probably, and then also, we would be responsible for the maintaining that road, you know. And then if we ever decided to sell the land, I told her, I said, you know, you know, you could give them right away out there, but the land valuable, the value of the land is more valuable if you have a road for it, and you know that, so I would just... But I did have a question, and she told me to ask you. Has, if we did want you to vote on this and you did abandon it, there's two different things, right? Abandonment and, what's the other one? Abandonment means you turn it back over to the landowners, and the other one is, I was calling it this morning.
Yeah, discontinued.
Yeah, state still owns it, but am I not correct on that?
I think so.
But anyway, have you ever had the case that somebody came back to you years on down the road and wanted it turned back over to VDOT? Has that ever happened? Is that possible?
It's never happened. I won't say it's not possible.
But it's a long process.
Well, if VDOT is out of it, it would be hard to get them back.
Yeah.
They're not adding anything new, I mean, once it was just gone, I don't know.
It'd be hard to get back.
Be hard to get back.
I just, I mean, we were, my wife was more adamant, she's a man, and you know how that is, she was more adamant about it than I am, and also, you know, I was telling Ms. Hoods, unless you put up a gate or something, you're not going to keep people from going out through there, even if you've got a sign that says, you know, in state maintenance and private property, they're going to go, you know, and you're going to have to take care, you know, worry about that. So probably, I'm not going to ask you to vote on it, which that might be easier on you, which I'm sure it is, but I appreciate your time, and I appreciate Ms. Hood taking this subject up, and maybe um down the road or something, we might want to do it, but I don't think we need to do it around here. But I appreciate you guys, and I really, let me say this, you know, I didn't know what I was going to get in, this is my first board meeting ever.
Oh, well, congratulations.
And I've lived in Scott County for, when I got out of high school, I'm 60 years old, when I, 18 years old, I lived in Scott County, but, and been there ever since, and I really liked living in Scott County. And for, you know, you guys got a hard job. You cannot, you're not going to win in anything you do, because you're not going to, the public's hard to place. I don't deal with the public, I have my own accepted people we log with. Mr. Mann, he was up on High Knob, do you remember that, up on Jeff Gathers, I was wanting to log him up there a couple of years ago, and that's the first time I met him. Anyway, it's a tough job, and I appreciate you guys, and it's just, it's an all-win situation, you're not going to make everybody happy. I guess if nobody had to pay taxes, they still have something to grab, but I appreciate you guys, and I didn't make the last meeting, and I apologize for that, because it got by us somehow or another. And a day or so after, we said, oh, Lord, we missed that meeting, but I talked to my wife, and she said, you need to go on. She said, you need to go on, and that way, you know, you guys would know that we were adamant about this, but we're, I just really think this would be the best thing. But I appreciate your time, and who knows?
Question for you, have you seen anything out of Jeff Rader in a while? I've not heard from him.
Yeah, yeah, we've got one more summer, we've got to go up there and finish that job, but...
You got some good plans for a time, I don't know.
Yeah, he does, he does.
One more question, would you be, would you want to serve on equals?
I knew he was going to ask.
That's a new question.
Okay. What does it consist of? When's the meetings and?
That'll be established, I don't know yet, but it would be somewhere in the next couple of months that they would start to, because I go through the appointment process and everything again, so, we'd love to have you, I think you'd do great on it.
But I mean, when would they meet, I mean, do you have any idea, or?
Usually, it's nine to four, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and Thursday are afternoon appointments from 12 to eight. So it's basically a full-time job.
So we have to meet with the public?
There we go.
There's the answer.
But now, how many, I mean, is this?
Just one at a time.
Right, but I mean, is this, you said four days out of five?
All five days, four days during the day and one evening.
For how long?
For about two months, two and a half months.
It's time to...
You know, I wouldn't care probably to be what, an officer?
When we get everything together, we're regrouping, I'll let you know more details.
You know, I would do that, because you guys do what you do. You know, it's, if, if you guys didn't have the mentality that you have, we wouldn't have anybody to run again. Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, you know what I'm saying. Somebody's got to step up.
I'm glad you recognized that.
Even though I'm a business person and running my own business, you know, it would be tough, but somebody's got to do it.
I mean, I work a full-time job as well, so, and do this, so...
I did until four years ago, I retired.
I take vacation time just for this, my own vacation time.
Well, I appreciate it, guys.
Appreciate your willingness to support.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Are we done?
We're done.
Thank you, Mr. Wade, thank you for coming.
And we don't need to take any action then.
Yes, you do. Your phone, they do have to take action to dismiss the petition that you put in.
Yeah, but that's just to say we're not going to do it, yeah. I'm going to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will entertain a motion to dismiss the petition.
There's a resolution in your address, and I gave you two, one of us to do it and one of us to submit the map, so one if you didn't do it, to dismiss the petition for abandonment.
Oh, there was two of them there.
Yeah, there's one, and then the map of it, and then that other one.
Yep. Resolution to dismiss the petition for abandonment of a road from the secondary system of state highways is due. So with that, any discussion, if we entertain a motion for that resolution to dismiss for abandonment, do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion, we discontinue the petition, dismiss the petition.
Ms. Stute made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? All fair and able to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I'm glad he came, huh? I remember him on the high knob, I forgot, but I do remember him, once he jogged my memory a little bit, so that's good. Our next item is the Mountain Empire Old Citizens Walk-a-thon, we usually give them $5,000 from our contingency fund, and we did that in the past. I know a lot of the senior citizens, my neighbor's passed away, he was 91, he got, actually got coal, and they helped him with that, and he was helping coal, and they helped him with it, so I know some others too that benefited from that. So, Ms. Orange, you need to say anything about it other than what I said?
This year's walk-a-thon is going to be back in person, the date is Sunday, May 1st, at Bullet Park in Big Stone, and they have a rain date of May 15th. Their goal is to raise $165,000, and there's no administrative fees that come out of that, MEOC handles all of the admin fees. And they do help the elderly population with heating-related emergencies. Last year, or this current winter, was 863 families had assistance, and they are asking the county to be a gold sponsor at the $5,000 level again this year.
Did this never put in budget?
No, we've not put it in there, but I can make that a line item if it's something, I think this is probably the third year that you've considered it, third or fourth.
Something to think about the budget committee, I won't make the line item. That, they would know too, they're getting the money, they know every year they're getting it.
Whatever y'all think.
Any other discussion?
And you do have about $9,300 left in contingency.
Is that before or after?
Before.
Before, okay.
Yeah, we just paid the $28,000 match for the Airepac grant, so that took a nice chunk.
That was about $4,300 in there to do it until June 30th. All right, any other discussion? If we entertain a motion to make this donation to come out of our contingency fund, do we have a motion to do that?
No.
Mr. Deuter made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Grube, second, any discussion? All fair and able to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 11, the ARPA.
We have 10 big.
The police leadership, Southwest Virginia.
I have to ratify a letter of support for the police sitting in.
Leadership and Southwest Virginia training. You have that letter in your extra packets. Uh, this was the one that I emailed to you in April. Uh, and the deadline for the letter of support for their grant application was before today's meeting, so I was just wanting to make sure everybody was on board with that letter. Uh, it is for the congressionally directed spending amount that they're trying to get for police leadership training in Southwest Virginia. So I sent that letter of support, um, that will be going to Senator Kane for consideration.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this letter?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item 11 is on your tablet. Uh, this is to approve, uh, some ARPA projects from the ARPA committee. We have three that we'd like for you to consider. GeoCom mapping, uh, is needed at E-911. That cost is $14,080. The pole books, uh, electronic version needs to be replaced. Ours are obsolete. And they will be replaced with, um, what's called a pole pad or something similar. There's two that the State of Virginia Department of Elections has approved. Uh, that replacement cost is about $63,000. And to replace the flooring at the sheriff's office, uh, I need to update that amount, um, to, up to $28,000 instead of the 15 that's on your tablet. So the three projects, um, for funding would be $105,080.
These are all ARPA American Recovery.
Sorry. Uh, there's some confusion out, I guess, in the general public about this COVID money, ARPA, whatever you want to call it. One guy really questioned me why we can't pay roads with this money. You know, and I don't know, it's, it's hard to, you think people would know that you can't do that? And we don't pay roads, but anyway, it was, it surprised me and the person that asked this was, you know, he was very serious about it. But anyway, we cannot, there's certain things, guidelines, I guess, my time to say here. You can't just go out there and spend it and whirr on anything, but there is guidelines on what you can do. We don't pay roads. Let it be known, public, we do not pay roads. That's not our, we don't do that, state does that. So anyway, $105,080 is the requested amount, uh, from this. And we do get another round of ARPA money July 1st, two million and $88,000, I think. So we'll have some money to, to ditch stuff with, uh, July 1st.
And you have already approved the overall ARPA budget for our first allotment. So these would be coming from, from a line item that's already got the money there. We just want to run these projects by the full board to make sure there's a consensus before we move forward with funding them.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve this amount of ARPA money for those projects.
I'll make the motion. Will you approve?
All right. Ms. Grube made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you all for serving that committee. I mean, probably made a lot of, done well with the city thanks for. Our next item is our bookkeeping matter of business. If you have something for us.
All right. Please appropriate $16,125 to tourism, BTC 2020 marketing leverage grant, 72600-5627 for reimbursement received in deposits at the treasurer's office. And appropriate $3,328 to sheriff's police supplies, 31200-6010 for reimbursement received. And appropriate $900 to sheriff's repair and maintenance of vehicles, 31200-6009 for entrance claim received. And that is all the appropriations.
I need a motion to approve the appropriations as described by Ms. Ricky. Do we have a motion?
Submove, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Ms. Hood, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the grants.
And please accept Office of Emergency Medical Services Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant Award for E-911 LEC 050621. And if accepted, please establish the ongoing expense codes for training, 31455-5540 and capital outlay, 31455-8102. Then appropriate $27,200 to 31455-8102 for reimbursement received in deposits at the treasurer's office. And please accept Sheriff's Office DCJS Burn Jack of Law Enforcement Block LOLE Grant Number FFY20. And if accepted, please establish expense code for police supplies, 4-1-31358-6310.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept any of these grants? Do we have a motion? Submove. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Turn second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is appointments and Ms. Tane, say, if you would, please.
And the first appointment is for the courthouse facilities committee and this is for the town of Gate City. We have one applicant, Robert Raymond Richards.
All right, do we have any nominations for this courthouse facilities committee?
I'll nominate Mr. Richards.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion. Nomination ceased and vote by confirmation.
Okay. Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're second. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
We have one applicant on the recreation advisory board for District 5. Uh, we have one applicant, Curtis Wesley Adams.
Okay. Any nominations for the recreation advisory board from District 5?
I'll nominate Curtis Adams.
Any other nominations? Do not entertain a motion. Nomination ceased and vote by confirmation. Do we have a motion?
Submove.
Uh, Ms. Grube made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hearn, second. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Tane. Next item is the county attorney items and it's good to have a county attorney back up here with us and, uh, up here on the front line and the county administrator here on the front lines. Welcome back.
Good to be back.
Thank God you've had you back. We may have you, but we knew where you were. We could look at you anyway. I can see you better than I can hear you. All right, anything, Sally?
No, I don't have anything today.
Anybody have any comments or questions for her? Ms. Keglin. I will say this, through all this stuff we're going through right now with, uh, equalization board stuff, she's really done a lot of work and a lot of research and we appreciate what she's done. I mean, it's been, and we've been on the phone emailing, trying to, you know, wrap her thoughts around this and she's done a great job, so thank you. Uh, Ms. Keglin, we want you to have done this. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next item is the county administrator items and claims, I guess, we first, Ms. Tane.
You have your green sheet in your extra packets. The general fund balance after claims, $7,822,246.31. On your comparison chart, you can see that's just, um, about $300,000 above where we were at this time last year. As far as claims, early claims for the month total, $166,279.54. Total current claims, some of the larger ones, um, fuel from Adco, $25,430.23. Armstrong Construction, uh, final retainage for the fire training facility, $32,350. Duffield Fire and Rescue, that was the match for the air packs for the whole county, $28,666.67. Luntson Pine Regional Library, fourth quarter, $50,762.50. So total current claims, $363,720.4. So total claims with early sets and current for the month, $529,999.58 is the amount that needs to be approved.
The school system pulling down their money on a regular basis, but that must have been about what it was this time last year, I guess they're.
We, um, still have a mil, I believe right at a million dollars that they can draw down this fiscal year.
Look back at fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20, they were doing a little better than you were then, so. Only can pay the bills.
I'll make the motion. We pay the bills.
All right. Ms. Grube has made a motion that we paid the claims.
I'll second it.
Mr. Ricky, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do you have anything else?
And miscellaneous stuff over there. That's it. I have miscellaneous.
All right, go ahead and do the miscellaneous.
I need to request a transfer of $24,000 from 3-001-12070 recordation taxes to 4-001-12320-1100, an amount of $15,000. And 4-001-12320-5890, an amount of $2,000.
And the total amount, you have a total, uh?
$24,000.
$24,000, that was the total. All righty. Do we have a motion on, on, uh, moving that money to the line items as suggested by Ms. Tane? Do we have a motion to do that?
Submove, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Hood, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
We also need to, um, appropriate $24,000, that $24,000 to recordation taxes. Amy, I need help. That amount's not being appropriated that we've received. So we need to appropriate it to be able to transfer it.
But you're taking, you took it from the revenue.
Right, but it's not appropriated in the revenue. So does it need to be appropriated? We might have another section of that next month.
I'm not sure if you need to do that or not, because it's probably in the general fund, right?
It is in the general fund, yeah.
It's appropriated for other use.
It's not appropriated at all.
Oh.
It's a money that's been received above what's been appropriated. We might have a different, another side of that for May.
Okay.
Other miscellaneous items, um, the, of Jean Dishner Bridge dedication is scheduled for April 23rd. And is 11 a.m. a good time for you, Ms. Hood?
That will be fine, yes.
What day of the week is that?
That's a Saturday. That's what was requested by the family. Uh, Ms. Hood will be presenting, uh, the resolution and we will be doing the sign unveiling that morning. If any of the board would like to come, I can get you, um, I'll send out a reminder and send you, um, the directions to where the bridge is located. Um, it is in District 6. Uh, Nicholsville, Nicholsville Day Cleanup will be April the 16th. Uh, that is a date change for those that are wanting to participate. Uh, this Saturday's weather, uh, was not cooperating, so that date, it has been moved to April 16th, which is next Saturday. And, uh, the 2022 Denim and Diamonds Event, which is, uh, Mountain Empire Community College Foundation, um, scholarship raising event for Scott County is also on April the 23rd. Tickets are $7.5 each. If anyone would like to attend, um, they can let me know when I can get you tickets. And I believe that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. If you can, those bridge dedication ceremonies, if you could go to it, it would be good, so, anyway. Anything else?
He's on his way.
Uh, let's go ahead and do the comments, requests, recommendations from the board and then if he's not here, we'll take a five-minute break. Mr. Jeter, have anything?
Uh, just thank staff for the work they do. Appreciate everybody.
Mr. Tipton?
I think the staff is well and, uh, our county attorney for being engaged this, this month. I know it was rough, I guess, getting through this, but we'll make sure we do the right thing for the county. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Hearn?
Uh, I got a call about Ponderosa Road. Of course, we had talked about that on the other side of the ridge, uh, from 71 on Ponderosa Road about putting some drain tiles in. There's actually a house, he said, right on the road. Uh, it'd be the first brick house on the right. There is a small stream that runs down through there and of course, all this rain we've been getting. Uh, it's, it's eroding away at their yard. Uh, of course, it's on VDOT, I, I guess, I don't know. Uh, but the person is just asking what, what's the steps that they could do? You know, I, I think they may even be willing to do something. Uh, but something does need to be done there about trying to keep that water from, uh, eroding away, because it's going toward their house, toward, toward the house there. Uh, Snowflake Road, you know, I've noticed throughout the county that they're evidently, VDOT has got somebody looking at these trees. If, you know, I, I mentioned it last meeting and I actually got a call again about it this month, about one on Snowflake Road. But I don't know the address there. I can't remember, but, um, we had turned in a work order about that, but I've never heard anything back about, uh, what's going on there. The last, we heard, I think, last week, somebody, or last month, somebody said that they couldn't find somebody to cut the trees. So I don't know. I don't know what's going on there, but. Uh, and, uh, you know, I've, I've mentioned this every meeting, I think, but, uh, the six-year plan, uh, you know, I'd like to have somebody from VDOT, you know, to follow through with what we had talked about last year.
VDOT will be here at the May meeting for the six-year plan, but because of funding and the estimates going up on the roads we already have, there won't be any new roads added to the plan.
Okay, even though we.
Right, there's no new funding to add additional roads this year, but he'll address that in May.
Yeah.
But Mr. Mullins will be here.
Don't add something.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Ricky? The fire training facility, will that dedication be in April? Do you have any idea yet?
No, that has not been scheduled yet.
Okay.
They have done the initial burn with the contractor. So the next step will be to do the ribbon cutting and there will be a, a burn that day with the fire training center.
Okay.
I mean, with the funders, the Department of Fire.
Right. And also I'd like to mention to Mr. Hearn that Mineral Hill Road was next to be paid when there is money. I, I don't know if we'll follow the same progression we did when we voted on it, but, uh, it needs to be worked on and that's yours now. It was switched over.
Okay, that part.
There you go. But I've got the ball rolling on. So thank you, Mr. Ricky.
And that's it. Thanks to the staff during this prime time.
Ms. Hood?
It's been a busy month. I appreciate everybody that's had input into our decisions. I think we've had a productive meeting today. And I'd like to also mention that April is the litter awareness month and, um, Mr. Daniels is going to have some flowers that he's going to send me. I want to put those wherever I can in District 6 and also share on Facebook, through my private, um, Facebook and my supervisor page. Because that needs, people need to be aware of that and stop littering on our highways.
Yesterday I was driving to North Carolina, was on the road there and I could see the litter that they had. It's everywhere. It ain't just, you need those. And I don't understand that mentality.
I don't understand.
It is bound to be. It is biodegradable, it's out for, I may throw that out, it's gonna go away in a week, you know, a day or two maybe, burn it with this stuff. Lot of blows out of back pickup trucks too, people will throw stuff, but I can try to close it out, but anyway, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Mr. cribby?
And going along with that, the, I actually talked to, or sent an email to Jessica Keith, because I thought that the person on seventy-two was part of the Scott Service Program, but they aren't, and I don't know who that is that's picking up the trash.
I tell you what, she did a wonderful job.
They have done a fantastic, amazing job from, I mean, it, there's so many of the orange bags along through there, that it was, it's overwhelming to me to, because they, that person has really went above and beyond, I guess, what I would have expected. So that's why I thought it was part, she was, she or he was part of that.
I assumed that too, but I didn't.
And Jessica said that she couldn't take credit for it, because that wasn't one of the participants in the program, so I don't know, like I said, I don't know who that is, but if you're watching, and that's you, I personally appreciate that, because, I mean, I know they've worked really hard on picking up all of that litter, because it's been amazing. Thank you to all the staff, I mean, I this has been a, there's been a lot happening here in the last month, and I know that it's been trying on all of you, so, and I appreciate what you do. And I, and I know without a doubt every time that we have some issue or something come up, that you are putting everything you have, and everything that you're able to do into what you do, so, and I appreciate that. I do. And that's all I have.
Thank you, and I don't have anything, one thing about the trash pickup, I got her in Dungannon, Walter Taylor, I'll go ahead and plug him, he's the pastor of the Freeville Baptist Church. And he's been picking up trash, he's done it for the last couple of years, and he's been all the way from where I live to Fort Blackmore, you see him doing that, and no, he's not an inmate participant or Scott Service participant, but he's been doing that, and so anyway, some people, they take pride in where they live and want to make it better. So you gotta admire them for doing that, I'll be the lady, I took my horn at her if I see her, and she, you know, and she's doing a good job with that.
It's been amazing to watch.
It is, but anyway. Alrighty, pardon?
I have one thing.
Okay.
If I could have Mr. Tipton update his motion for the transfer, and just change that language to appropriate and transfer the amounts that I listed previously will be good.
Okay, you wanna do that, Manger?
I do, I will amend to the motion you just said.
And who seconded it?
Ms. Hood.
Alright, and you?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, all fair and proper saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, question carry. Thank you, Mr. Orange. Or anything else, the traditionist is here from PSA, so, good timing. Do you have trouble getting that? I think?
I'm sorry?
I said, you have trouble, we're getting old, you have trouble getting that seat?
Well, I'm trying to say, where to put my phone?
You know, if me, I'm gonna push myself up, I'm like.
Good to see ya. Thanks for, thanks for having me, Ben.
Good to be here.
I don't know what you got, I guess you got my construction projects, and there's a
I did.
There's a resolution. Great. I want to start out by saying that we have a recent retiree, and I just wanted to honor Clifford Dean of Nicholsville, Colton Ridge area, who retired last week after twenty-four years of service to Duckfield Government Authority and then Scott County PSA. Clifford ran our Colston Regional Waste Water Plan. With Ms. Clifford's expertise and knowledge of operating that facility, did an excellent job. Did not want to retire, but due to disability, did not have a choice. I wanted to also report to you that we have five thousand five hundred and seventy active water accounts as of yesterday, and one thousand three hundred and seventeen active sewer accounts. And then I'll get into the construction project report, and we'll go over everything you have in writing there before end. Please interrupt me, any time I ask questions, I'll try to answer them. We've recently completed a project, that's, I always like to put those in the completed column, and that's the Three Road area project out of Valley was the last, we finished that last month. Daniel Boone Sewer, is that really slow one out there, with all the rock, and they finished the main line, and they are boring the road for service life. I'm not going to predict how long that's gonna take, because it's the same rock, but it's going slowly. And then when they're done with that, they'll be able to test, do all their pressure vacuum testing, leak testing, and people should be able to hook on. Upper Cliff Mountain Phase One, Black Gun Rain Waterline Extension is, is done, except for the pump station, which needs before it can have water. So we're just, we're caught up in this environment of shortages and inflation, and waiting on the pump station, the pressure tank, and water meters.
You don't have any idea when that will be available?
I have no idea when they will get materials, since the contractor, you know, is responsible for that, he's ordered them months ago, and so waiting on, he's waiting on those materials. And then I'll skip, skip to the second page. Rodman Valley, which you asked me about, is we, we rebid that, and I've talked about that, the bids were high, we rebid that for labor only, and we were able to award a contract last month to Hill Construction. We obtained over nearly nine hundred thousand dollars in additional grant money for that project.
I did though, Dan, I saw the water lines lying there.
Saw the pipe?
Yeah, I saw that.
We have, they're not all there, but.
Yeah, I know they weren't all there, and then I drove down to where the Phase One will end.
Yes.
And to say, you know, to make sure some who have been calling me or complaining, make sure that they're in Phase One, and they are, and I was very happy about that.
Great, yeah, we'll be real happy when it's done. Hill Construction is, does an excellent job, they did, they're part of the fairing project, so. And the Hunter's Valley West portion, PSA will do that, there's a correctional board that has to be done under Big Stoney Creek, as required by Corps of Engineers, US Fish and Wildlife, and it's a very expensive way to get across that creek, but it's got, we don't have a choice. So that, we'll have to wait on that. Getting, getting close to doing improvements to the Nicholsville Water and Waste Water Systems, and the Duckfield Waste Water Treatment Plant is getting close. The big sewer project, Yuma and Hiltons, is still in the design phase, we made good progress on the easements. We're getting ready to replace more old galvanized water line in wherever city, we were fortunate that, there's a change there on number six on page two, that's now a hundred percent grant, as of last week, we were able to, able to get that converted to all grant. Central Scott Water is, is the big water project, and we expect, we are applying for more money for that, for the, for the second phase this spring to the Health Department, and USDA is, wants us to apply for money for the third phase this summer or summer, but our board's got, I got, our board is that, but, so that's pretty mature to talk about those two funding applications, but I'm sure they'll want to.
Mr. Dishner?
Yes.
I asked about this when you appeared for us before, but
Yes.
I forgot, Highway seventy-two is that part?
That's up to Midway, so that's, that's in, that's Phase Two A.
That's under Central?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Central Scott, and we are now calling that Phase Two A, and we're applying to the Health Department for money. The application's due May sixth.
Okay.
So hopefully, midsummer, I would hope that we would have word on that funding, but yes, good question, thank you. No, I'm, wait, we're just, it's hard to keep all these straight sometimes, but Phase, that's Phase Two B.
Two B.
That's, that's gonna be rural development application, Phase Two A is Mandel. The old Mandel Phase Four is our PSA, uh, Jill Minow, that's Mandel Phase Four, so that's Phase Two A, we're applying to the E D H Four. In May, this summer, applying for Phase Two B, Midway area, this rural development. But we've got the funding for the first phase, and we've submitted preliminary engineering documents to the Health Department to start the ball rolling on getting that approved. And, and, and we're working on the waterlines for In Good Cooper Road, Fayland Hollow, and and then some not yet funded, that were, it's still on our radar. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, and we've got the resolution for, for the Nicholsville Waste Water Plan, Bob.
We did a study also on AP Carter Highway, you probably don't have any update, that probably takes a little while. Do you remember, we did that on the PSA, a study for AP Carter for water?
Sewer.
I mean sewer, sorry.
Yeah, AP Carter Highway is in the, is in the Hiltons project, it goes up AP Carter a little bit, Phase
Yeah, but I meant
Red.
Right, I was talking about a study, but I don't see that on here.
Well, it's, it was in the search grant, it was in the original study, but it's, it's not been funded yet. Phase, part of AP Carter is on, is in Phase, is in one of those first three phases.
Right, yeah, I'm talking about the new study, we only did that a month or two ago, yeah.
Oh, we talked about it at our last meeting.
Yeah, looking, looking for, going further, further up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can. They're, they got
We may know something at this meeting.
They've done a lot in the past month, they haven't done that one.
I've been getting some complaints about Powell Mountain Road, about sewage management from the houses on that road, if there is a potential problem there, and I was asking, you know, to bring it to your attention, and asking, you know, when could they get sewer system? There are several houses on that road.
Powell Mountain Road?
Uh-huh.
Is that?
It's, goes up to meet the mountain.
Goes all the way up to top of the road off the four lane?
Right, yes, right there, where the, in Pattens Field, where one road goes down to Blackwater, the other one goes across back to
Thomas Village, or you turn left on Powell Mountain down, the Powell Mountain Road, I know it turns left off of the fifty-eight?
Off of fifty-eight, yes, you turn left, and they have some problems with the septic tanks in that area.
Well, I mean, we can look at that, but that's a long way from our existing sewer.
Yeah, I wondered about that too.
Would be extremely expensive, but I mean, it's something that, look, I could get some preliminary engineering evaluation done to look at that.
Now, that would be good, because I think there is a problem in that area
Yeah.
about managing their sewage.
There's a lot of, yes, I'm sure there's, there's a lot of issues with the type of soils we have, and rocky ground has had issues with septic, they don't septic systems.
On the central Scott County water, what's the overall goal of that, what is that?
The overall goal is to provide water to as many areas as we can that are between Clinch Mountain, Clinch River, and north of Gate City, and Northeastern. So Phase Two, Phase One serves Snowflake, part of the way up Dig Moxon Road, corner up the main road to Nicholsville, and then connects with Nicholsville. The second phase, Phase Two A, serves Mandel, the ridge tops, Mandel. Phase Two B will serve Midway, and then to Twin Springs High School, we want to get Twin Springs High School interconnected, if we can. And then, and then we want to go on out Dig Moxon Road, to the end of the user agreements that are signed, which is close to the county line. And then we want to fill in side roads.
Yeah.
It's a long-term project. Good question.
I've got a question.
Oh. Is it for me?
That's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna get your mother on this case, I know her real well. Now, um, Shoals Lane, Pepper Road, that was supposed to have been in one of the early phases. They did get it down Pepper Road about a mile and a half or so. And I had ninety-two percent of the people in there signed up, and one, I wore two pairs of shoes out, I was and then I went back over it again, and I'm pretty sure I brought that right straight to you down there.
Yes, Dave has done a great job getting people to sign up, you know, and he's right, the, it was our Boozy Creek Phase Three project that, that went out fifty-eight to Shelley's Lane, and then it turned left on Federal Road, went part of the way down. We weren't, we ran out of money, but we're, but we've got some more money to go further on Federal Road, and we need to get money to go to serve all those folks down in there, especially Dave, because he's got my name.
I hope, I hope like if you picked the show, this is
That's pretty good incentive, so.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. But, yeah, we're gonna get it done.
But I'm not gonna be alive when it's done.
Well, you've got pretty good genes, man, so I think we'll be.
Well, I'm gonna have to either get some water, I'm gonna have to redo my pipe coming in by spring, about like about quarter mile pipeline.
Yeah.
And we lived in there forty years ago, opened up gravity water pressure, you can take a shower with it. Now, when it comes out of the kitchen, like a little stream about the side of a pencil, maybe if you're lucky.
You, the rest of Federal Road and Shoals Lane is in what we call this multi-community project. We thought we had all the funding we needed from the Health Department a year ago, and that it evaporated. So we only got enough to do part of that project, which is In Good Cooper and Fayland Hollow. And you have to match up your funding with, you get, B is paying for your buck, so, but Phase Two of multi-community is your area, and Prince Valley East Road, so. It's, it's on our list, it's high on our list, so.
We're gonna do it.
We're gonna get it.
I've actually got some folks that live up around DC area, own a house there, and they probably think about maybe moving back here before, but every time I talk to them, what have you heard about the water?
Yeah, if me invite you to our PSA board meeting, I know you don't get out much, don't get to town, but next time, come to, come, next Tuesday.
I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna let you get out.
Come to PSA board meeting, seriously.
I encourage you to do that, and take it for the whole board.
You've got my cell number, I'll text me when I think yes.
Okay, it's, okay.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock next Tuesday.
Here.
Nine o'clock?
Yes, yes. Are you?
My secretary will.
Okay.
Oh, you're talking about, and then we back up one thing past that, the trash pickup, she walks up on their road a lot, and by the time she comes in with a bag of trash, I'll give her a pat on the back.
And I live in Washington, Canada, it's the same way, I mean, our farm's in Washington, Canada, and it's the same way, but let's not forget or, I miss.
I've got it here.
And we got one, let me make it, we were gonna have two, but we got And we got one eliminated. We were going to have two, but we got the one eliminated. For the, we're a city, they just told us yesterday, converted to granite, instead of aluminum, we were going to have two, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Dishman, for answering questions that I send you and keeping me informed. I appreciate it.
I try to keep up with your emails. I may miss.
Before we, this resolution, anything else from you? Do you have anything else?
I don't.
But y'all worked hard down there at this fire training facility, getting the lines up there, fire hydrant stuff done, and that's really appreciated. Y'all worked hard to get that done, and y'all those guys, you, all of you, it's really appreciated. I know the fire department people appreciates that. And so, but your assistance there was greatly appreciated.
They got it in there about half the time the others would take it. I think they thought it was going to take a couple of days, and it took half a day or something.
Yeah. Well, that's going to show you, you've got a good crew, and it is appreciated what they've done there, and so we do thank you.
I'll pass that along to them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job. Anyway, we'll do the resolution. Anything else for Dishman? All right, this resolution, if you have it before you, it's a bond agreement, four hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred forty-three dollars. It's a twenty-year bond, and it's a county obligation. We have to vote on to take this on. If those numbers are correct, Dishman, it's on here, but I'm sure it is.
Yes. Yeah, we verified that, I'm happy.
Yes, all right. And anything you want to say before we entertain a motion here on the...
This is to upgrade, improve the Nicholsville Waste Water Plant, very much, very much needed, if that is.
One question we do, I want to ask this, will y'all be assisting in Dungham? I know they're getting grant money to replace some of their lines and stuff. Do y'all have any part of that, or is Dungham doing it?
We've been in meetings with them. We tried to get a project that would help them and us, but we're not, no, we're not really associated with that project.
Leno Wesco was assisting with it and...
We've met, we met with, yes, we assisted in the preliminary stuff. We're not involved in that.
I didn't think you were, but anyway. All right. All right, we're entertaining a motion, this resolution, this obligation to the county, it's a twenty-year bond, and for that amount that I had given before you, so with that, we entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Hearn made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? Call the Fair Book and say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call me anytime, have any questions or concerns.
All right, anything else before we close for the day? We've had a comment period, and I do think about it next meeting, it'll be, what, May fourth? May the fourth. Do we have budget stuff that will be done anytime soon?
Yeah, we've got, the budget committee's got a couple of meeting schedules later this month, starting next week. And then you'll probably have a workshop after the May fourth meeting.
You said the pencil in three dates, or are we going to meet two of those days, or just...
Maybe three of those dates.
Oh, really?
Ink those in, Marshall.
Oh, ink them in?
Yeah. Well, there ain't now.
They're all missing it. I can tell you to get that little rabbit. Couple things, remember when you schedule these, and I know there's one person that's bored to be getting married sometime in May.
May the twenty-first.
May twenty-first, all right, and so we'll kind of walk around those up. There may be a honeymoon involved, you never know. People get married, you never know. You may never see her, I don't know. Anyway, we'll try to walk around that.
The next term, Wednesday.
And so, that'll be...
Thank you.
If I want to bring it, now the whole public knows. Everybody, you mean invite the whole county?
Yeah, no, please don't show up.
You want to go, that's what Taylor did, get it over with. All right, the next meeting will be, what, we say May what, May fourth? So we will be back then. Hope everybody has a good rest of the week, month, day, and happy Easter to everybody, happy couple of weeks. So God bless all of you. This meeting is your bye journey.